Alright, there you go.
Focus is on him. He's my daughter. I'll move around as well.
So, I think we know the reason why we're here. We're being sure of our former our then president of the meeting that uh we should come here and gather and listen to the man that we pay to get other people to put the nation to move that country forward. Now before we get started, I'd like us to be on our on our feet for an opening prayer, please. Alright. I'd like to invite Dr. Babalola for a short opening prayer for us, please.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this awesome moment. We thank you because we know you've been wondering yourself when we will be taking control of the terrible situation in our country. As we take this step forward by faith, we pray, Father Lord, that you use this information that our brother Omoyele Shushu Wure is representing. We pray that it will not be only the flag there of our ancestors' expectation, but it will also be the tool that we use as a divine intervention to really make things right in Nigeria. We do not want to shed blood in Nigeria, but Father Lord, we know those who really make peaceful revolution impossible, they themselves, they are really asking for salvation. But with your intervention, we know that things can be so smooth. We want things to move smoothly in our country. We want a leadership that will really governize the whole country. That those who presently are even sojourning abroad will not hesitate to come home, to contribute to the respective process. And as we daily preach today, Father Lord, we pray that your wisdom will take control and that Lord, you will give me a very useful interaction today. And we thank you for our brother, he's been all over the world, jetting, traveling, everything. We pray for strength. When the time, Father, we pray that you give him, you give him divine energy to continue. So that this struggle, Father, it will not be just a physical struggle, but it will be a struggle that because you are also empowering him, he will not feel tired. He will be stronger all the time. You will feed him both nutritious, physical food and great spiritual food. And he will remain strong to the very end. We pray for victory. In fact, we are thanking you, Lord, that he is not just here to just speak as a man, that he is not only our president in with you, but he will be the president for true. Let us have your mighty name, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Shall we have our seat? Alright. Um, I know we all have a seat there, but again, we are going to stand up again for our lovely, first and foremost, we start with the Nigerian National Anthem. Some of us can still remember to sing it, it doesn't matter how how that country is right now. I see some of us, I say, we can sing that song again. We must sing that song again. That land belongs to us. It's our fatherland. It does not matter how hard it is. Let that song bring joy back to us again. Shall we rise and sing the National Anthem? And after that, you may stand while we sing your Australian National Anthem as well. We kick off with the Nigerian National Anthem. We switch over to the Australian National Anthem. Please remain standing. Thank you very much. Put your hands together for yourself. The Royal Majesty National Anthem indeed, that was. And to gather, seeing all of you. Um. Yeah, just to see how you guys flow if you sang that song. It feels that there's still hope. Yes, much hope. Um, generally, we look. This event, we don't mean to uh separate people by way of high, you know, high table and all that. But I think I still have one thing there. It's not for me, because I have the master ceremony today. So I'm not sitting there. But I'm just going to call anyone and then they'll be like, don't finish that. Just go and take it. That's the president to be. So this is going to be your souvenir. And you can just show this for you getting over the walking stick. You show your children that. And that's what I'm doing, sir. Thank you. I think you connect with me. This is really good. Um, we want ladies in the house. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to integrate now and make sure um we we cultivate and integrate ladies in the house. Um. The way your focus is going down with that now, can you stand up and go and take your position there? Please stand up. Yes. Put your hands together for her. You know, I don't have to mention her name. I know I will call this back, but it's okay. Thank you. It's good to have a lady right there. And then so that they know we are integrating. I just saw on the post on the TV recently, the Ethiopian president, Ethiopian Prime Minister has just recently go and checked all the ministry cabinet. Fifty percent women, which is really what we need. But checked Nigeria, all the ministers we have there. About three women. The rest are men. That's why when it is fight in the house, you see the women take off. How can three women wait war against those men with their mothers? So we need this. And those are the things we want to take back. We want to take equality back. Put your hands together for yourself. No more discrimination. There should be equality in this city. Things to run through quickly. I'd like us to just rise to honor those who have lost their lives in Nigeria. People are dying, just you know, there's still killings in Nigeria happening right now in some part of Nigeria. Some are dying for a purpose, for a cause. For some of us who are privileged and opportunity to be in a place that is, those are our people. We should carry them along. I want us to stand on our feet and just one minute of silence for people who have lost their lives in Nigeria, all over the world, fighting for justice, for a cause. And most especially for three members of AAC who were traveling from the meeting in Delta State and lost their life and then ran into a river. And Pastor Jones, Mr. Idris, and Mr. Ernest. They're all Delta State, in worry, and they lost their lives. And this for a cause, for the nation. Shall we bow our head for one minute, respect, please? Thank you very much, media. Get your soul resting perfectly, please. You can have your seat now. Alright. Again, I just want to acknowledge people sitting here today and those who did not make the time to come out here for the support so far. The journey has just begun. We are in a race. Please, don't give up here. Talk to your friends, your family, to vote wisely. Because me, I tell them from my video that the soup will sour in the future. But we need to add something to something, that's why we put water to yesterday's soup. For these guys, they are old carbo, they need to cool. Please. There are people amongst us here today who made it possible for this event to happen. And we're not just going to make Shoray is here, he flew, he's been flying around the world, both in Nigeria and outside Nigeria, and he's worked tirelessly to make sure he reach out to everyone. But again, there are all that people, stakeholders, and then the followers who are also making it possible for him to achieve this dream. With that, I'd like to just mention some people in the house. If your name was not mentioned, it doesn't mean that we don't recognize you. It doesn't mean that you're not part of us. But the fact that you are sitting here, you are here to fight a cause. And we really appreciate you. But I just wanted to say, few people who have made it possible for this event to happen. They are one of the stakeholders, I just want to mention their name quickly. And volunteers too, who also make, you know, took their time to decorate this place, to make sure all the woodsmen are ready, the PA system, to make sure that, you know, when we do task giving in church, after task giving, we do task chopping. So which means there's going to be something flowing through our mouth. All these things have been, have come out of our people's personal pocket. And that is not easy. For you to dip hand into your pocket and bring up to grace this event. May the Lord continue to refill your pocket in Jesus' name. I would like to call on people, and they are here, some of us are also here because they go where. Um, the stakeholders prayer I have here, Ajinus Gwamba, Benga Ojomo, myself Wesley, Frank Bademosi, Professor Tade, Engineer Angos, Chidibareng, Halima, Maduka, Dr. Deli, Babalola himself, Professor Benesha, Shulari, from Joy James, Nogadijo, Perry, Ralph Peters, Richard Amodu, Pastor Stanford, and Tommy Adewayo. These guys have been hiding behind the closet, working tirelessly to make sure we are here gathered this afternoon. Put your hands together for these people, for their time. And now I want to put you reference, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention and then you came over the second page. Um, Firstosiniora, Kazim, Dauda, and Mr. Paul. These are all part of the stakeholders. They were just hiding in my second page, I didn't say that, I apologize. Um, the volunteers who made it possible for us to be having this moment. Then other people than uh Mrs. Shilon, Pat, Mrs. Adeboye, Halima, Indeed, Kova, Ogenchi, Esther O, Yinka O, Yeti O. When I was getting all these schools, I said, did you say family? Families are there. But that's good. I can see all the O's coming out. O is a very universal word group, they do it very well. So that's good. Mrs. Esther Fawcett and Yinka Ayoko. Put your hands together for this love they give you. And they have taken time to make sure we are getting um enough of our time today. And then again, I just want to put you reference the overseas supporters you have as well, Mr. Omoyele Shoray. These are the ones we have in prayer, but there are people who are strongly behind your movement. Inasmuch as I am one of these people in a platform, I also belong to other platforms in a Delta State and other state. And we will do, you know, brainstorm and say a lot of things. These guys, I just want to quickly mention Usainde Wobere, the Obama Leo of UK Birmingham. That guy is strongly behind you. Um, Igudaro, AKA Daro. You probably would have missed people. As I mention the name, it rings a bell. David Singh, Brola, AKA Ocean, Dr. Greb, Opo Nigeria, Joy, Omorokwe, Nigeria ASAP, Not Chapter. You can see the ladies highly involved. The ladies are taking, they're taking it back. And of course, Delise Gozmon for the people, amount of people that you've got. And to all the AAC party members and supporters, we say thank you for your time and for the support for these platforms. I want to quickly introduce this man to you. And uh I kind of wrote something a little bit about him which I put together, but if certain things, if they're wrong, please, we will read justice. We are, we are read justice, but I have to put this together quickly, but Omoyele Shoray. When you go on social media, you will hear all sorts of stories about this guy. Some people will say good about him, some people will say this guy is a radical. I would go have a mafia that would beat him down. But I always tell people, look back to history, because we think we've lost our history. We're not going back to history. I looked at one post a few days ago on social media, and I saw Omoyele Shoray standing behind late MKO Abiola. And he was very young. And I said, wow. Which means this guy has been fighting for a cause for nearly thirty years. Nigeria is fifty-eight. This guy has been fighting for a movement for thirty years. Minus thirty from fifty-eight, how many have you got left? That is not rocket science, which means we only got twenty-eight left. For someone to still be fighting consistently, persistent, unconsciously. Don't you guys think that that's a cause? I think it's a, it's a, it's a matter of the record. And I looked a little paragraph about this guy. And I said, what kind of a man is this guy? What can a man do? One man that can motivate, inspire, and give his people a reason to hope and believe in their country once again. Who is this man? It's no other person than Omoyele Shoray. Mr. Shoray is an indigenous of Epoondost State in southwest Nigeria. He was born February sixteen nineteen seventy-one in Niger Delta region of the country where he was also raised. He studied geography and regional planning at the University of Lagos and hold a master degree in public administration from Colombian university. He teaches modern African history at the City University of New York and post-colonial African history at the School of Art, New York. A human rights activist, pro-democracy campaigner, and of course, we all know him. He's the founder of an online newspaper called Sahara Reporters. Please help me, stand up. Make a stand-up ovation as I introduce to you this very lovely man. The presidential candidate for African Action Congress come two thousand and nineteen Nigerian presidential elections, Mr. Omoyele Shoray. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that very nice introduction. Thank you, uh Australia. Thank you people of the city of Perth for bringing me over here. Thank you the organizers of uh today's events. Um, I should say that uh when I was studying geography and planning at the University of Lagos, I never thought that one day I would end up in the discussion I refused to do when I was in university, which was to come to Australia. Uh, it's uh when our professor was teaching us about Australia, they said it's the end of the war, so don't go out to do this. But uh and I got there, it's coming here, it's truly the end of the war. How did I find out? I got to Australia with Ma and Emirates uh aircrafts and thought we had arrived. It took another five hours. We had to visit. I said, you know, this is going to be the true end of the war. But I've had so much love and support since I arrived here, it makes me feel it's the beginning of the war. And I thank you so much for making it happen. Uh, one of the things that I saw when I got here is how important it is that, you know, we develop our country. I came here, uh and every city I've been, Brisbane, Melbourne, and Sydney. As I said, totally, the place was designed, it fell from the sky. You wouldn't even think that this place was developed by human beings. Reason is that that is what we are made to feel at home, that's impossible to do anything. It's impossible to make roads. It's impossible to have hospitals that are working. It's impossible to have housing system for the poor. It's impossible for us to have education. But something has been wrong with Nigeria because today is Sunday. Uh, you know, I'm not particularly a religious person, I should say, but I've read the story of Jacob and Issa, right? And it tells me what happened to Nigeria. It was that you all know about how Jacob and Issa, Issa lost his uh his bat right to Jacob. And when we talk that story in the Bible, we always felt that Issa, I mean Jacob was some schemer, right? He was this guy who, you know, made his brother lose his bat right. Somehow you hate Jacob, somehow you have pity for Issa. And was in the case of Nigeria, there's a parallel as well. And the problem for me is that that story is incomplete until you look at the transaction. The problem was that there was an offer made to Issa by Jacob to sell his bat rights. And he accepted it and took the price and walked away. It is same thing that I think happened to Nigeria. There was an offer made to us to popularize us. There's an offer made to us to oppress us. There's an offer made to us to drive us out of the country to the poorest lands around the world. And we accepted it. Uh, I don't know how we accepted it, but the result is that if we didn't accept it, we could have taken back our bat rights for the last fifty-eight years, which is what we are trying to do now. And we must make it happen. Uh, I've told you that story, not because it will make a sense, but because it's the driving force today behind the reason I'm standing in front of you. That for the last thirty years, as the F C introduced, I have been fighting very hard to take my own bat rights back in Nigeria. You know, to the extent that when I found myself in the US for nineteen years, I spent nineteen years in the US between nineteen ninety-nine and uh last year, or this year, I lived in the US. And I lived comfortably like most of you did, you know. I had kids there, got married. Uh, but I discovered something that, you know, that bat right of yours, you cannot regain it back from another man's land. And there's no body who's going to give you your bat rights. Whether they call it naturalization, whether they give you an employment uh check, or they even offer you a job, they give you free education. There is just nothing like being in your own space, living in your own country, and being happy in your own country. If anybody were to ask you in this room where you would rather be with same facilities you have here, I think the answer would be totally Nigeria. Where would you rather be with electricity? Where would you rather be with free education help? Where would you rather be with the kind of infrastructure I've seen in uh Australia? The answer would be Nigeria. Because it's no how well you have treated up here that it can be like home, because that's where you come from. So, I brought home to you, or brought from home to you greetings from our people. I've been in Nigeria now for eight months, eight months. Uh, leading a movement and I was taking back. And about two months ago, we registered a political party known as the African Action Congress. And I became the presidential candidate of that party less than a month ago. And I, four days, I've been traveling around Nigeria, having done to eighty states in Nigeria, several cities. But I've also been under a lot of pressure to visit and meet with Nigerians all over the world. So, over a hundred events already gone. And the conclusion I've come in and walked around with all of you is that Nigerians are looking for a country that they can call their own. Even for Nigerians who don't plan to go home, they want a Nigeria that is functioning. Even for Nigerians who are born outside of Nigeria, like our kids who are here, they are always talking about Nigeria, you know. But sadly, the only information most of them have about Nigeria is sad news that is constantly coming out of Nigeria. Uh, the sad news you are hearing from Nigeria for those of you who are here is not a place for sad news. It's deliberate. Nigeria has been designed by Nigerian leaders to be a place from where only sad news can come out. When you look at the mathematics, you look at the geography, you look at the administrative politics of Nigeria, the social, cultural, and traditional politics of Nigeria, only one result that come out of it, sad news. If you look at the nature and character of Nigerian leaders, the only outcome of their leadership is sad news. Because we are saddened and bothered with very greedy and wicked individuals, human beings, sadly. And uh, in speaking like this on a Sunday in front of a lot of people, I feel a little bad. Because most of them are looking for hope and the inspiration that, you know, this country will become a better place for them. Yes, that hope and inspiration is right in front of you today. We are determined to change the narrative of the stories that are coming out of Nigeria. But we cannot do that, ladies and gentlemen, without changing the objective conditions on the ground, without changing the leadership in Nigeria. And it is the reason why I'm here in Australia. Uh, my Nigerian time is uh about ten past eight or eleven past eight. Australia is uh, what time is it in Perth? About past three. Uh, in Brisbane, probably like five P M. It's, I don't know, my body's full up right now, I don't know where I am. You know, I know where I'm, Nigeria, and Perth, Brisbane, Sydney, I was born. But we have to do this. And I'm glad that all of you are sitting down here today, willing to engage and interact about the best way forward for Nigeria. Uh, so, I will be very glad to take a lot of questions and suggestions, a lot of comments about what's going on in Nigeria. Typically, what I do is to give a long talk, talk about how bad things are. But I know that most of you already know the story. And there's no point to repeat it into you. We repeat it to ourselves all the time. Everywhere you see three Nigerians gathered together having any conversation about how bad things are in Nigeria, talking about Boko Haram, talking about Boko Wu Harry, you know, Artikoo, or Tegelsho, or Basongsho, or the people who destroyed Nigeria. Uh, but we can take back Nigeria. We can make Nigeria work, we can make Nigeria be better than even Australia. Reason I say so is simple. When Australia was built, or a building like this, a long time ago, technology is such that if you have the right kind of leaders in Nigeria today, we can bring in new things that will totally just turn Nigeria around in such a way that even people in all these western countries where we run to to become citizens and go on exile, whichever way we call it, will be jealous. They will be very, very jealous of what has happened in Nigeria. They will be surprised at what has happened in Nigeria. And the people that can make it happen are those of you who are sitting in the room today. Glad, and also people at home who are also braving it. And but the sad part about home is that most people in Nigeria, who are still in Nigeria, they are just, they are trapped, they are waiting to leave. That's true. That is my experience in the last eight months in Nigeria. If somebody were to go to Nigeria today and say, I'm issuing visas to anybody who wants to leave Nigeria, to go to Australia, where they can, the US, seventy percent of Nigerians will leave Nigeria the same day. I'm telling you, that's how bad things are. Thirty percent of people that have been left are people who are probably unable to stand, walk to the airport or go to the port. The rest of Nigerians are just waiting to, in fact, senators will be the first soon to leave. Governments will be struggling to live with sirens in the country. They don't believe in a country. They made a country to become a country in which no human being wants to live in. So, except those who are trapped in the place. But this could change. This will change. And why and how it will change is the reason I'm here today. We have seen the way the rest of the world is working. We have seen the way the rest of the world is working. In fact, most of us here seated are the most helping other places around the world to function. We are the engineers designing and building roads and houses, infrastructure for Australia. I've met Nigerians before who are helping to shoot rockets into the space. Met a Nigerian who was one of the first who to design the vast party. There's a Nigerian in the U S who can take a baby out of a womb, fix the baby to the back and the baby will be on health. I heard there's also a similar doctor here in Australia, Nigerian doctor, who has such marvelous capability. But if you, if they head to Nigeria tomorrow, they would not hit the airport without being kidnapped. If they make it to where they want to do it, the person that is supposed to receive them will tell them, we don't need your care. If you bring a new idea, so take the idea from here and ask it to get away from them. If you keep coming back, they'll watch you. The place is so emasculating that there's almost no space, ladies and gentlemen, to do good in Nigeria anymore. And that is why there's the urgency of now. Urgency of why this intervention we're talking about must happen and why all of you, regardless of whatever you can do to support, must intervene at this time. If you have financial support, it's great, but moral support is very important. In fact, sanctions, I'm recommending sanctions, I'm recommending, as I started, that people living at Watchful Sanction People at Home, that if they don't vote for the right leader at this time, then there's no more Western Union transfer. Somehow, we have been encouraging the listeners at home by sending money at the slightest provocation. Anybody can make a story of you, send money to them. Somebody will ask you, um, you know, I'm sick. You keep sending money, when you get to Nigeria, discover this building a house for themselves. And they will refuse, however, to do anything about the situation that could make them stop waiting for Western Union from abroad. So those of you who are sitting here today are the biggest investors in Nigeria. You are the foreign investors, real foreign investors. We are bringing in over fifty billion dollars into Nigeria every year. That is officially, if you are sending through World Records, Western Union recorded. But knowing Nigeria, when you want to send real money, you hide it inside the container. And you have to go to Nigeria for you, that's where money is. Or you go to the airport for somebody to carry it for you. So if you add the way we send money unofficially, uh, the unorthodox way, we are probably sending this for a hundred billion dollars. There's no country in the world, in the West, that is giving foreign aid of a hundred billion Naira to any country. In fact, the entire aid given to the continent of Africa is not up to what we sent to Nigeria through, uh, money transfer. So you must start sanctioning people at home. We started preaching by asking that you should force them somehow to get PVC, that is permanent quotas. That before I sent you my next transfer of Western Union, I want to say a copy of it by WhatsApp. A lot of people, they worked, I'm telling you. It sounds funny to you, but since we've been preaching it, it's worked. We found people as we're traveling in Nigeria, saying, if it's not for you, I wouldn't have got PVC. My brother in, uh, Australia, they asked me to get PVC. And now we're hearing from people, they say, they say, I don't want for you, they don't want to save me money again. It's the way we have to take the bull by the horn, ladies and gentlemen. Because that country could be one of the best countries in the world. The whole world will be looking up to Nigeria in a matter of four years from now. But the whole world could be running away from Nigeria in a matter of two years from now. What is two years from now? If two of the major candidates of the two major political parties win the election next year, one of them will likely put Nigeria on eBay or Alibaba. I'm serious, that's not funny. The other one will dissolve Nigeria in acid, that's Wu Harry. These two guys have no plans for Nigeria. One of them, Artic, who spent twenty billion dollars in Portugal to purchase the, uh, the candidacy of the P D P. What do you think he will do when he becomes president? He's going to go back his money. One person probably has allocated over a billion dollars to spend election article. And this is the same article that had the vice president twice in Nigeria, eight years after about a month. They are doing a custom officer, there is no way of explaining how he made his money. But we know how he made his money. There's a record of how he made his money through collection of bribery, you know, from Siemens and other companies in the archives of the U S government website, if you Google it today. The next person is our lifeless ancestor, Wu Harry. When I say ancestor, I really mean it. Wu Harry is official, he's seventy-six years old. He even goes back to the old city of London next year, might add another one year. Anytime he sees his uncle, he adds one year. But the reality is, younger sister is eighty-two years old. Yes, Nigeria, this is not, this is not a lie, we are hearing from the source. You know, Nigeria is fifty-eight years old. The leader of Nigeria is fifty-eight years old. I mean, what kind of country are we running? These people, we are not against them by the way, because they are old. We are against them because of the age of their ideas. They have nothing to offer us anymore. The best they can offer Nigeria is what Nigeria is today. A broken country without infrastructure, a broken country without hospitals, a broken country without roads, a broken country without housing and all of the good things you take for granted over here. Nigeria in two thousand and eighteen is still celebrating a flickering of lights, what they call Op Neppa in Nigeria. That is, if you get electricity turned on accidentally. In Nigeria, the office of the electrical, uh, company that is known as Neppa, or the top H E now, uh, P S A business, power has changed and the problem has changed then. They use generator to power their office. Yes, we, we told it before when we went to the office and we saw them uploading a generator at Neppa office to power their office. Those are the points of contradictions that has been dead in our country, ladies and gentlemen. And if we then decide, which is simple, to change the situation through the elections that are coming in next year, February sixteen decides the presidential election, to vote for a young person that has got integrity, a young person that has got exposure, a young person that has got education, a young person that has got capacity and stamina, uh, you will find Nigeria to be a different place in less than twenty-five years. Why did I say so? Egypt just added over thirty-four thousand megawatts of electricity to their national grid a few days ago. You guys probably heard about it. They built it in twenty-five years and it's a mixture of gas, solar, biogas, biofuels, biomass, you know, renewable energy and also fossil fuel, right? China built in nine years the longest bridge ever to be built by human beings between Hong Kong and mainland China. It's the same last nine years that we couldn't figure out how to sign a contract, hear me, to conclude the refurbishment of the Lagos-Ebadan Expressway. Just to sign the contract, it took nine years. By the way, they have been refurbishing it for the past twenty-something years that I know of personally. They started refurbishing Lagos-Ebadan Expressway, which is one-twenty kilometers. Since before I left Nigeria in nineteen ninety-nine, I went back there in two thousand and eighteen. So eighteen, nineteen, eighteen years after, same old story. The other day, for those of you followers on Facebook, I was trapped on that road within the speed of two kilometers for six hours. But it's the only road that leads out of Lagos and permanently under reconstruction, not even construction now, right? I came here and everywhere, I was driven by those of you who have been assisting my travel here, it's always about construction, everybody will point to you, this neighborhood used to be bushed last two years, now it's full of houses. And I was asking, these houses, are they, are they houses for rich people? Now, what are you talking about, rich people, these are council workers, regular people. In Nigeria, the kind of houses you live here, I see, Nigeria is only rich people that can afford to live in those spaces. But it's because the country, a nation here, is a national state that cares for its people. And it's not as if you even have like some sound political system. I hear you change your prime minister like gas captain, every month. Maybe while we are here, you change the prime minister, you change the rules. But that will change the reason, the reality towards them. Because you are constantly never satisfied with the leadership. And you keep changing and asking for changes. You know, even those of you who are not even Australians, you're asking to change the prime minister of Australia. But those of us who are Nigerians, we can't change our leaders in fifty-eight years. It's the same Wu Harry of nineteen eighty-three, that's still the president of Nigeria in two thousand and eighteen. And they will then have the audacity and the temerity to be asking young people for experience. Where would you get experience? When they refuse to leave power? You two get experience by working. When your father refuses to let you leave the house? How can you have experience to become the father? If your father refuses to allow you marry, how can you become a father to older children? So it's horrible, but we can change it and we can do it. And those of us who can do it have made ourselves available. I am one of the seventy-nine candidates that's running for yes, seventy-nine, if I ask you it, that's seventy-nine candidates. Everybody that had the possibility of running for office. You know, the reason why there are seventy-nine candidates is that Wu Harry made the presidency so cheap. Everybody thought it was president of Nigeria. Yes, so I, you can't blame them. If the president doesn't have Y E S certificate, so anybody who had the military charity will apply to be president of Nigeria. Even now, as of yesterday, they still couldn't submit his, uh, Y E S. Instead, they speak with the military. You are the commander-in-chief of the armed forces. Your result is with the armed forces. Why should you write it in I N E form that you don't know where your result is? Just tell the armed forces to release your result to I N E. But truth is that Wu Harry did not go to, did not do Y E S. And you can tell him from his demeanor, you can tell him from the way he talks, that he's not educated. There's no doubt about that. Even one of the traditional rulers in the north, the Emir Sannou, said it today that it's time for Nigerians to start voting for educated people. And I have no doubt that the Emir is referring to Wu Harry. Yes, but he was blocking out between the X's. That's if they don't destroy him before the election. Anyways, this is why I'm here. I, I, I'm very lax today, I, I don't want to, you know, make any big speeches. I want also to have an interactive, uh, session together. This is my last city in, uh, in Australia. Hopefully after tonight, I'll get the chance to leave. Uh, this is a very huge country of yours. Head, Australia is actually four times the size of Nigeria, four times, six. But everywhere in Australia, there's probably a Lincoln press to Brisbane. Can you drive from here to Brisbane? Awesome, right? Yeah, you cannot drive from Lagos to Abelpata. I'm not making it up, you can start the journey, it's, it's not only when you get to. When you can drive from here for two weeks for the road, you will get to Brisbane. Yes, listen, I'm. You cannot get to Abelpata from Lagos in a day. That's if you are lucky, you make it second day. So please, uh, thank you for coming again. You, you, you are amazing people. And that, you, you hold, after leaving Nigeria behind and most of you, when you left Nigeria, you swore that you'd never have anything to do with Nigeria. Yes, everybody has got a story as to the reason they left Nigeria. And most of you are sitting here, also some of you left Nigeria thinking, I'll be back in two weeks. And your two weeks became twenty-seven weeks. Seven and a half weeks. But regardless, you have not left Nigeria behind, you know. Nigeria is also a very interesting product, right? No matter how you leave Nigeria, Nigeria doesn't leave you. It's like following you around, you know, wherever you go. So thank you so much. Again, I want to thank the organizers, not the organizers of, uh, tonight's event only, but the organizers of all the events I've attended right here in Australia, from Brisbane to Melbourne and Sydney yesterday. I am the only or the first presidential candidate in Nigeria to come looking for the presidency of Nigeria in Australia. First, good for you. The fact, you can count the number of Nigerian presidents who have never been to Australia. And how many times have you been to Australia? Probably no more than ten in the history of Nigeria. So I found myself very privileged and lucky to be in your midst. And I am looking forward to an interactive session this afternoon uh, to discuss how next year, uh, we can start taking Nigeria in a different direction where I am personally sworn as the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you. Put your hands together one more time for Shorri. When I say Shorri, you say, Take It Back, Shorri? Shorri? We are taking that country back. For some of us who also go to Nigeria all the time, it saddens you. When you see here and compare, your brain, just go back like in time to Australia and see, you try to compare, it messes up with your head. I live, my, from my place, my house is being, look at police station, look at my place. It's the only place where police, vigilante will be collecting money for security. Look at police station. On the same street that I live, opposite my house is Air Force Base. Police man will be collecting money, every vigilante will be collecting money for security. And this is a country where a police, you are asked to hold a, a thing. You hand over to police, police will hand over thing to vigilante. You go there, ask yourself, who they guarding? For this country. I would have never gone to Nigeria, go to Nigeria, see them and look at the meter. The meter, they are using, they are using card. The, the, the way it moves, it move like next, cool like next man, the way they are handling it. And not only anything, the card will just go there, there, that country. Please, we need to take it back. Honestly speaking, how much will you hear? If you always stand here and begin to tell you, in fact, you don't even think to, because you know what you're saying, you heard. It's just the attitude we need, we Nigerians. I keep telling people, little pact said, you cannot make somebody independent unless you make them grow. Grow them to become independent. And J R K, they are telling me, Lady President, they are telling me, says, one ignorant votes, your one ignorant vote destroy your future and the insecurity of your nation. And that's what we're begging Nigeria, the time has come. People that have head, they don't, they can't think. Yeah, what do you call them again, analog? I got that word from you, analog leader, analog brain, they are not thinking digitally. Can you imagine? We're taking it back, it's just me. We, we supporting this movement, doesn't matter how hard it is. Wish I smile one day because I was playing Sony Okusu, late Sony Okusu. Few days ago, I tears flowed down my eyes, I said, which way Nigeria is? Which way to go? I said, but I love my fatherland, I want to know which way Nigeria is. Go back in time and play, I've had this, uh, uh, Jacky Bob already been playing now. All this Chris May, wait, go back and listen to people that play music of years to years. People like, I posted something of the last, of the last page on my, my account and I see what the last said. These people, they are like prophets. What the prophesy back in the day is happening right now. But we need to change our rotation, let's change our attitude. Once we change our attitude, our orientation about things will change. Rome was not beautiful, eh? Rwanda in history suffered the worst genocide in the world. Rwanda had the worst corruption, people were slain, eight-hundred thousand people massacred. But man, I have flown to Rwanda and rode my way to South Africa.
But man, I have flown to Rwanda and rode my way to South Africa from Kenya. You will not believe how Rwanda is rebuilding the nation again. You will see Rwanda that you heard of many years ago. Go and look at Rwanda, and I want to be faster, developing country in Africa right now. Because what, it's not the country that live in Brandy, it's the leader that live in Brandy. Because they are not there, we need to kick them out. Look at Ethiopia. A prime minister that went to the country Egypt, and he said, you know what? All the people you are detained, release them. They released all the Ethiopians and put them on the same aircraft and took them back home. They're doing amazing work. Right now, my people, Shorari has spoken, but that's not the end, it's just the beginning. It's just the icing on the cake. And that's the reason why we are here today, interaction. We want to have questions and answering now. Are you, have you prepared your question? And we've got a mark before in the middle already, and I'll be passing this one to Mr. Shorari. Please, let us be conscious about, no randomness, we are not, we are all gentlemen and ladies, we are all calm, nice and easy. Any question you have prepared, it is time to ask this question. Let our children hear, so that when they grow up, they can start to read and learn from it. It's questioning time, my people. I like to ask anyone, if you have any question, raise up your hand. And we will make your way. First question, please, uh, Professor Shorari, put your hands together. Oh, thank you.
You are welcome to Western Australia. My name is Ebunisa Komnesh Shorari. I'm not asking a question. I'm just going to, uh, like offer an insight for us to discuss about. I believe the problem of our people is the mind. Zizigla said, and I quote, if you want to destroy the man by a woman, get hold of this our mind. Once you get mind, you got everything. I observed it very, very much attention when Mr. Shorari arrived. And a couple students stood behind to watch his movements and the heterites that surrounded him. I was very impressed. I compared it to an experience I had a month ago during the Australian mining down under. Where I was privileged to be president. And the former president of Nigeria by name, Obasodjo, arrived almost two hours late while the director of Nasima was speaking. And to my utmost dismay and disappointment, the directors stopped the speech. There was a pandemonium in the hall. And everybody abandoned everyone and went straight to go and profit before my dad. I walked to one corner and I shook my head. That is why I said, our problem should be centered on mind. I am, I'm very glad when I heard Mr. Shorari spoke about his strategy for our rural people in Nigeria. That practically answered the question of mindset. Because I called my people in Nigeria and I said, a young man by name Shorari is coming to Western Australia. And my brothers say, easy. I said, is, did you, you don't know him? I said, well, we are only for a T Q anyway, so we don't know who you are talking about, we are tired of learning. So when Shorari mentioned that create a sanction, this is a very, very powerful method. Who and why you are spending money to, tell him or her, this money is the last one coming to you. If you don't show me everything that you want to change it. God bless you for that, Mr. Shorari. When I asked my senior sister that you are a registered nurse and your sister struggle to feed your child. I said, God is in control. I said, you need God in no place. My question is, what do you want to do in the coming election? We went to church, we blow my, I said, forget that. I said, I praise myself with my torch, but that doesn't make me a moral. I have to use my brain. So, the problem is, we look at ourselves here. A pessimist be saying, uh, they are just wasting their time. Nigeria, they are already confident in election. Please, ladies and gentlemen, then today, it started on a rough road. And the outcome of that rough road is what we are enjoying today. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you very much. Put your hands together one more time for Professor Shorari. Uh, thank you. Just recycle the card, take it back like a ticket.
All right, thank you everyone for coming around today, and thank you, Mr. Shorari. In part, it's a privilege and an honor to stand in front of you today. And although I've got questions to ask and I've got suggestions as well. But before I begin, I just want to congratulate you for one thing that you did. You know, and that was the standoff between you and the, I don't know if you still the Minister of Communication, or maybe still, does he see the Minister?
Yes.
Because that is top one thing. That is one thing that really brought, you know, the consciousness of the youth. That's one thing that really brought out that confidence. You know, that gave us, it gave to a hope that we can naturally stand and face these people and tell them that, look, we are fed up, we are tired. You know, when I left the country, that was in two thousand and thirteen, I remember my experience, I was fed up. Even while going through a lot in school, you know. Where you probably be in class, you're studying engineering, medicine, whatever the course is. But you're sitting in the classroom, you're asking yourself, of what benefit is this going to be to me? Because if we're like, you know, a nation of more than, it's something million. And then we have people who are, you know, like, we've got more than two, three million who are reading the same course. And then we're looking out there, looking at the future, we don't have any hope of job. So the question is, you're in class, you're competing consciously with your mates and unconsciously with the number of students who are. The reason, I don't know, they say you're traveling to Australia. I said, yes, and I was going to study. And they said, oh, can I see your visa please? And I said, well, that is it, yeah, the salt was in a printed, uh, A4 paper. And the guy looked at me and gave me a very funny smile, and he said, you are not going anywhere. And I said, why? He said, it's not in your passport. And I explained to him, I said, look, Australia has a new technology, Australia doesn't work like that, you know. Our passport, the fact that, you know, there's an opportunity, I know, in, in the country, so many opportunities. We have a lot of corporates, I mean, UCO members, so after school, we are being sent to different place, you know, different part of the country to serve. Now, over here, there's what they call, uh, medical insurance, you know, that covers everyone. You know, irrespective of where you're from, even if you're coming from the country, you're not, uh, a citizen of the country. You're expected to have some form of medical, you know, cover. A lot of UCOs have died during my time, I mean, I've lost count, but during my time, I know that, uh, I've lost more than close to a thousand people that I'm aware of that died during N Y C. No medical cover. The last incident that happened the last time was, a student was shot by the police. You know, she was taken to the, uh, uh, medical center, to the hospital ready. And what happened, they said, oh, uh, we cannot do anything else except, you know, you put some deposit. You know, it's a challenge there, and I know that a lot who are walking towards it. I had a conversation with some people, some young individuals who were planning on setting up insurance just to cover UCO members. And when they got to the point where they're about to establish, sorry, I run up now. Then it goes to the point where they are about to establish that, what happened? They were faced with the same bureaucratic crap. So my question now is, I believe that you got something that covers the Nigerian youth, because the Nigerian youth makes up the country Nigeria. Um, I just want to share what your idea is and what you have to cover for, uh, the youth of the country. Thank you very much.
Put your hands together one more time. The gentleman, um, yeah, so I will, please.
Three questions.
Three questions, every three. Okay, every three, okay, so you, okay, cool. All right, uh, please, we, we have a lot of questions, and please, we try and make you very snappy. Max two minutes, straight to the point, please, and now, Shorari, two moments, thank you very much. Dr. Ovalala, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, President to be, you are welcome again to Australia. My contribution is very simple. Uh, everybody wants Nigeria to be better, and we know in our mind, and God is going to use you to make it happen. So, some of us just want to share some ideas, practical ones, so that you can just, you know, run with that as well. Uh, my background is, I went to Mayflower School, so I'm a Tanshul Ameri guy. So when we were in school, that man just identified people who referred to as potential leaders. And he would sit us down and he told us that Nigeria is not really hard to run, but there are people who are just too wasteful. And that leaders should not to suffer. Anybody is going to look for political cause to, you know, steal our money. The people should have a way of, you know, talk, making a sweer of them or something like that. They should just not be allowed to be there. Politics should be service, and everybody knows the life of Sholam in South Africa. So what I'm trying to say here is that, for you, for instance, I could just see the evidence of leadership here. You didn't bring any possible encouragement. Uh, another person to just see his lifestyle was Peter Ode, everybody will know Peter Ode as well, what he did in the Number. This man just plug leakages. He said, he would go to, uh, uh, every afternoon, they would slaughter about three cows. Expecting to bring visitors from what he said, what am I bringing visitors to? If I'm bringing visitors, I relate to them, but I was like, stop cooking. If I don't give instructions, don't even cook a farm, not talk of three cows. Do we really need all those presidential jets? You know? So, practical way of saving money simply means we have to be extremely thorough. So much money have been wasted in, in the past. If you can, the National Assembly, for instance, to me, is just a way of wasting our money. If we can really streamline that, you know, definitely we don't need to, a, a bad camera, this is legislation. We bridge that down to what really is productive. People are there, the body will go there first as a service, they don't get anything at all. Just come there because your regular job is there, and you come at regular time to contribute to everything. Now, my profession, I'm a medical doctor. And the system I see here is something I think are working in Nigeria. So for primary health, the government doesn't need to go and start building structures. They can use doctors on the ground, but they have to be electronically linked to what we call medical care. Nigeria can design something similar. And those doctors with, are Nigerians who also are registered to see them. As long as they have those cards, you know, it's a kind of health insurance, whatever. People should be able to see any doctor near their neighborhood. They are dying, and they have that first primary care. And the doctor, and luckily, most doctors in Nigeria run like a mini hospitals as well. So this idea of somebody having a broken leg in an accident, they rush him to, he get a general hospital. And they said, look, if you can't pay your, uh, registration money, no doctor is going to attend to you. A lot of people died in their mori, they're just like that. That sort of thing should never happen. And the last note is just that, the biggest resource we have in Nigeria, they are the youth. Now, look at the United States in the, in the early thirties. When Russians took, took over from, uh, the other market, you know what to do in the depression. The youth were galvanized, there was no money, everything was costing money here. They might just put all the youth to construction. They put them in camps, government would feed them. They were doing all the construction, the road, all the highways in the US, I understand, that, that's what they all came about. The huge dams, all those, the youth used to do that. So in Nigeria, I think the most bad thing to do is, what kind of job are you going to do for them? Sholam was, they didn't credit that to him now, but the idea of the National Youth Service Corps was Sholam. It's spelled out with, with the students, that's what it came about. So the National Youth Service Corps, as it is today, again, is a waste thing. It's more of an opportunity to get the youth across Nigeria to really know themselves. There's no point putting somebody in Nigeria, Lagos, to do national service in Lagos, that is nothing to apply for. So it's a way to know Nigeria, know your people, and really remove all this artificial concept of frivolity and so on. When by the time you finish in that private one, you are not married, man, probably bring another private one wife home. You know, you get used to the cuisine there and all that, but the point I'm trying to make there is, the youth in Nigeria now that, that, you know, have nothing to do. Create a job, government give them like a bar, you know, use them like soldiers. Anywhere in construction, put them there, they are sure of, uh, accommodation. Government pays them a stipend, which can more than, you know, food, water and suit together. And they are doing service, we don't need Chinese. So a lot of those people, they have left university, they have their own ideas about construction, brilliant engineers, they're all there. Let them tap those ideas and, you know, the closing is the energy thing.
Thank you very much.
So, we look to the, our hands of energy, or targeting and so on. I think already on the right track from that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, we've got three. We've got three questions now, so we're going by three questions in a, in a row, like, one, two, three, and then he'll nail it, and then we'll go one, two, three again. So the cards will be going around in numbers, so we're going to be going back to number one, two, three again. So, and three, four, okay, all right, okay. We, no partializing, we're going to be very, uh, partial here. Okay? All right, I will hand over the microphone to Shorari, you ready?
Yes, honestly, the last, uh, three comments are not questions, might be their suggestions that we could use.
Okay.
And some of them already be, they are already, uh, on track regarding some of the suggestions. So, uh, I just have to thank you, and I hope that you continue to contribute ideas to our campaign. We are going to hit the ground running big time, uh, starting November, I think, when we start with the rally, the rally Nigeria. We have no doubt that we can win this. And as soon as we win this, we will still need you again to bring, uh, these dynamic ideas. What Nigeria is looking for is to stop the recycling of the same people that failed Nigeria. And bringing people with fresh ideas, just like we have mentioned here, fresh leadership. People who are, who are making this work in other places. You mentioned the issue of doctors, uh, who can treat people wherever they are. When I get sick in Nigeria, I get my treatment through telemedicine. I call my doctor in the US, this is how I'm feeling. And what is usually my biggest issue in Nigeria is stomach flu. Because you are picking a poor bee, you know, in a market, and all the places, you pick stomach virus. And they tell you what to take, you're fine, and that's when you call the doctor, I'm fine. So, a lot of Nigerian doctors have actually spoken to me who are living abroad, that they are willing to do telemedicine as far as it is possible. Just a matter of, you have a central number people can call, and, you know, they have a card, a universal healthcare card. And you call that number, and a doctor from Australia can treat you, who is a Nigerian. Or you know, you go, the call may go to the one in the US. And if somebody cannot take care of you, they can consult among themselves and say, look, this is a complicated case, they have a case meeting about it, and they treat you. These are possibilities that are already existing in places like Ghana. But our leaders, if you bring any new ideas to them, it's as if it makes them upset. But our leaders, if you bring any new ideas to them, it's as if it makes them upset. When you bring any new idea, they look at you as if you have come to assault them. And they search them. Who are you going to tell us how to treat people in this country? Because you are living in Australia, because you are living in America, who do you think you are? Me too, I've been to America before. All those kind of very petty, you know, uh, attitudes. What is destroying Nigeria and it comes mostly with this analog brain leaders. You need digital thinkers.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was being observed. I'd like to call on card number three. Please introduce yourself and make it really snappy, and I will be interrupting if you go beyond time. Take it back. Take it back.
I'm John and I just have two questions. I grew up in school, in a private school, a private school. And, uh, I was in a situation whereby students in high school have to pay to get maths for project. Um, luckily, I was a senior, um, head boy for that private school. Uh, but we had the economics teacher who obviously funded money for the student. I never partook in that. I never partook in that. And, but I got into serious problem with that particular teacher, actually, till I left, even though I was the head boy. Uh, what plans do you have, um, in order to incentivize the students, the young ones? Because those are the leaders of tomorrow, right? And that corruption mindset is already been built into them, even right from high school. So in that area, what plans do you have? Because it's not just about building more schools, you know, we need more schools, obviously. But how do you plan to tackle that, uh, situation, um, in the mindset of the students? Another one is power. Power is very, very important. And the doctor was talking about the Medicare card and all that. But without power, Medicare card, it can't work. How will it work if there is no power? The car to operate the car, those who will be making the cars. I mean, I've been following the PVC collection and all that in Nigeria. And a lot of people said they've been trying to get their PVCs for over three months, but they've not been able to get their PVC. They go there, they say, oh, they're still working on it, they're still, they're still printing it. So how do you plan to tackle that, uh, problem? Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shoray. I've been following you up on YouTube for a while now. And it's a pleasure to see you in flesh. I won't be wasting much of our time, I just go straight to the point. Um, my question for you is basically, um, how you want to, I mean, what structure do you have for the country? I'm talking of totality of the country. We have, you know, ethnicity problem. As we speak right now, Kadna is shut down, 24 hour coffee. How do you want to tackle Gokoua Ram? How do you want to bring the country together? How do you want to put the structure in ground, I mean, on ground, to make everybody feel like this is the country that it belongs to? We all love Nigeria, that's why we're talking about Nigeria today, and, um, very, very passionate about it. The very first time you started, I was telling my wife that it is a joke, but I'm beginning to believe in you now. She's the one that is actually pushing to say, yes, she believes in Shoray, but I've been going through your YouTube and everything. I think you have strong passion for the country and, um, basically, we, we, we want to see you there, we hope it's going to happen. So that's, that's my first question. What structure do you have in ground that will kind of incorporate the whole country? Lagos, Anambra, up North Bono and, you know, Yoruba, Southeast and all of that. How do you want to bring us together? That's the first question. Same question is the health system. Now, um, doctors just spoke about part of it. I, I'm a GP and I do ED part-time, emergency part-time. And I found out since I got to Australia, it's difficult to die. You get to be alive, to be honest, as, as I was shocked, you know. Unrecked, you say, amongst maybe 10 people who come, and two people will die. It is difficult to die. Come there alive, provide a ward in or the ambulance box alive. You will be alive. There's no way you can die, you know. Everything, all the resources to be put in place, you know. But when I was in Nigeria, I did my alshamship in Lorient, you see all the, all the. All the emergency people on the ground, you know, on the ground and, you know, and they, and that's how, you know, they'll just be. They're just dapping for life and they just die there. No oxygen, no nothing. So I think we should have a structure whereby there can be a proper emergency. Nigeria up to now does not have a proper emergency. So if we do that, we need to keep ourselves alive. It's only keep ourselves alive that we can fight for this movement. And then we can make more youth, you know, to be alive. So I guess that's my question. Because of our time, I wouldn't go too much into why I want to say more than that.
Thank you very much. Number five. I say, oh, die, now die.
Oh, no.
Not be here. Number five, please go to number five. Step forward, sir. Come that way and I'll bounce you on the microphone. Yeah.
Peking safe, I never seen Peking die here. I know. If you don't put for 10 months, you will wake up.
Uh, Mr. Shoray, it's, it's really nice to meet you. Just like the last speaker. I didn't know much about you. I, I can say I wasn't so interested. But since you're here today, I said, let me come and see what happened. But I can tell you that I'm not a fan. Uh, because I saw a few things. And I really wanted to take note of your current madness. You know, when you were talking, it was like a human being talking. You know, it wasn't like one high horse, it was like one of us talking, so I really wanted to keep to that. I also want to ask you maybe a very personal question. Uh, do you belong to a secret society? Uh, because when I look at you and look at everyone of us here, it could have been any of us in the place. But I tell you, some of us have known that, uh, should I say it? Some of us are not courageous. So what, what is behind? You know, are you seeing Shoray or something will come up later? I don't, I don't be in front of you, and that's why I'm a fan, because I see someone that could do something, but some of us couldn't do it. And I also want to say that normally, a system is more important than a person. So how do you intend to surround yourself with the right people? Because we are seeing Shoray now, 10 hours and being grounded. But how, when you come up power, who are we going to see, you know? So if you could handle those questions, I have a few, but I'll give other people a chance. Thank you very much.
Put your hands together for Mr. Ephraim. And you've got three questions to answer now. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the first question is about how to tackle the mentality of, uh, young people. Well, I think Dr. Sholari mentioned that the mind of our people. How do we take role of the Nigerian human mind or Nigerian mind? Such that it is not messed up, uh, at a young age. And that's what the question, the first person was talking about students. And I think one of the things I've always, always known was I've been growing up. Our educational system was better, even though we didn't have fancy schools, because we had mentors. We had people who came around when I was in primary school, who were described as people of great character. And they would come talk to us and live and we would be aspiring to become like them. But today, Nigeria, the value system has changed 360 degrees. If you grew up and the only person who made it in your village is a thief. And is the one who know the nicest cars. Even the people who are punished go to him to ask him to pay the scoops of their children. Who would you want to grow up like? A thief. So, and it's a country in which we do not visit consequences of this who do wrong. We praise them, right? We go to parties and praise them. You know, singers, we sing their praises, even when we know they are kidnappers, they are thieves, they are robbers. Just like, uh, uh, Dr. Sholari was saying about Obasanjo. He came here and everybody started frustrating him. It's the same thing I was, I faced when I arrived in Nigeria to start campaigning. Everybody's like, when are you going to go see Obasanjo? When are you going to go see Obasanjo? And I keep asking them, wait, Obasanjo. Why would I, why should I go see Obasanjo? The same Obasanjo that invented and worked on becoming president in 1979. Through two toll, 12 toll is what they drank up at that time. It's the same Obasanjo that said that. Agyala is not the Messiah, he walked against him until they killed him. Same Obasanjo that was given a chance to run Nigeria for two consecutive times. And said he was not satisfied, he won the third term. When they drove him out of his third term agenda, he went and brought a dead person to run Nigeria. I said, why would I go to his house? It's because the Nigerian mind has been so colonized. That as Jerry Rollins said when I met him in Ghana, the former president of Ghana. He said, the problem with Nigerians that they are still involved with the oppressors. And until you separate them from the oppressors, until they start hitting the oppressors, it's as if they have no future. So I think when people see consequences against those who do wrong in society. In human minds, the students, a young person who starts understanding that they have to live exemplary life. Right now, there's no basis for a person to live an exemplary life in Nigeria. Because criminals are the ones who are venerated in the country. They are the ones who get the most respect. You go to Lagos, Lagos is owned by one person. Jagavan. Yes, you go to KwaZulu State, it's owned by one family, the Saraki family. So it's, it's, sometimes you start wondering, again, like I started. At what point did we sell our bat rights and how much? That's the question. Uh, number seven question is, what structure to tackle Gokoua Ram is a general question, I get this all the time. Uh, or how do we bring people together? I'm telling you, bringing people together is not difficult, but they have to be done through justice. The question is to ask yourself, who is this in Australia that brings you together? Is there any day that you get a letter from the government of Australia that says, please, so, we want you to come together. We want you to love the country. No, what makes you love Australia, for those of you who have changed your citizenship. It's because Australia delivers to you social and economic justice. When you walk, you get paid. On weekends, in the US that I lived in, you know, uh, for 19 years, if we don't get paid. It's like the world may come to an end on a payday. But we are waiting for that check to take you to the check, to the cashing place when I started there. You cannot even imagine not getting paid. It's unimaginable. But in Nigeria, it is a surprise to get paid, you know, at the end of the month. You, you wonder why you get paid. What happens? That the governor releases money. There are governors who are owing 16 months of salaries to their workers. And what they are owing is 18,000 naira per month. That same 18,000 naira translates in less than 600 dollars per year, minimum wage in Nigeria. Here in Australia, I heard that in two weeks, people who are unemployed gets 600 dollars every two weeks. That is more than the salary of a worker in a year in Nigeria. So why would there not be unity when things are working? When we sang Nigerian National Anthem and Australian National Anthem, I see this zil, which people were singing like. Nigerian one, people are just like, let it be, let it be, let it be. For the Australian one, I saw how it's true, you know. The shoes are sitting like that. It might sound funny to you. A country that doesn't believe in you, you can't believe in that country. But if a country is taking care of you, even if you hear the National Anthem in your sleep, you'll stand up. But the Nigerian National Anthem, I beg, don't try that in front of some people, even. There are parts of Nigeria where if you go and play National Anthem, they will beat you up. Because the country is not serving really in any capacity. I can't help but laugh at the question, the person who said it's difficult to die here, but it's real, right? Because all it takes you whenever you are sick in this part of the world is to get to hospital. Or for hospital to get to you. Yes, one day in the US, my son, I was beating my son, what, and he had seizure. And we thought he was gone, we just laid him on the, on the table where it was snow. And we tried to drive out of the house with him, the snow blocked our car. The ambulance came. And the ambulance guy came down, the major one of them, one of the aids. Cooked him up with this and he said, oh, I found a corpse. And after he said he found a corpse, everybody should stop crying, he's still alive. In Nigeria, there's no way they can find that corpse. You know? Because the person is coming, is not coming with first aid. You know, there's no way an ambulance will come to your house to pick up somebody to go to hospital in Nigeria. I've never heard it before. When people have accidents in Nigeria, our humanity are so strict that they will be looking in their pocket for their cell phone. They collect it first, yes, that's the first priority for most people. Collect their cell phone wallet, then the receiver is still alive and say, okay, they'll help you stop revival, take you to the hospital. But most of the time, you get to the hospital, there are no doctors there. You know, or when you get to the doctor, the doctors are even wanting, why is it that you have not died? The more you go there, you look at them and say, if we are still alive, this means you just end your mission, die. Nigeria is only peace on Sunday, where churches are praying for people to die, 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 die. You know, invoking fire. And there are no firefighters in the country. It is part of the way the mind is set up. Somebody said beside me here when you said that people are very hard to die, said, I know witches and wizards here in Australia. What happened to the Nigerian witches who came to Australia? Why you didn't leave your witches and wizards? Is it only the people without witch, who are not witches who got wizard? So many of you, before you came here, you were regarded as witches because you are poor. You were regarded as witches because you are sick. You were regarded as witches because you didn't pass exams. Every time you went to look for a job and you didn't get a job, you always start suspecting your sister. Or your grandmother, or the village people. I know people who don't go to the village because they believe that all the villages are made up of witches and wizards. When I took my kids to Nigeria for the first time, everyone is like, you better take them out of the village. I said, for what? You know witches are hell. I said, the worst witches are based in America. If they don't kill them, there is nothing they can do to them. Of course, there are no witches anywhere, there are no wizards everywhere. But when you don't have hospitals, what do you expect? What they are saying is that if my kids get sick in the village, practically, there is no hospital that I can take care of, no. I said, we fly them out of the country and before we get to the airport, they'll probably be dead. So trust me, we just have to take it back. We have to take our country back. And the moment we do that, we, we will kiss all the witches and wizards goodbye. The witches and wizards will also be dancing shakshak. Because there is a correlation between lack of electricity and witches and wizards. The more there's electricity, there's no witches out in Nigeria, but we will be living in darkness. Secret societies, somebody asked me a very interesting question, I love the secret society. It's very, very interesting because when I was at the university, uh, one of my biggest challenges was being a civilian leader at the University of Lagos. And we had problem of secret societies, court courts, as we always call it, secret courts. And we had to fight them. And we had to fight them, and when we were fighting on campus. I was asked the same question, where did you get the courage from to confront secret courts? Are you a secret court yourself? And my question was very easy. Is that if somebody has courage, you won't need to be a member of a secret society. Yes. If you are brave enough. If you are brave enough, it's people who are not brave who need to join hands in secrets with some people to fight. Or if you are brave enough, you don't need to act in secrecy. I can say, the way I am now is the way I've always been since I got to the university in 1989. The way I am now was the way I was when I was behind Abiola in 1993. The reason I was behind Abiola in that video, I'll tell you today. Abiola gathered all these politicians behind him, they were collecting money from him. So I went to see him to tell him that students are going to fight the announcement of June 12 election. As usual, Abiola stammered and said, ah, student leader, thank you for coming. He grabbed 800,000 naira. Bam, you know, the man is always giving out money. And I told him, I said, chief, what for? He said, for people to go and keep fighting against Babagida now. I said, chief, I'm not here to collect your money. I'm not fighting Babagida because of you, I'm fighting Babagida because of my own future. And you don't need to bribe me to fight for my own future. So Abiola was shocked, you know, because I was wearing sneakers. He said, what kind of person are you that is not asked for money? And when I gave you, you did not collect. He said, come, come next to me, I'm going to address the media outside. I want you to be the person standing next to me. At that point, most of the politicians that collected money from you had abandoned Abiola and went to Babagida to be collecting money. That was the history of why I was standing behind Abiola in 1993. In 1993, I was 21 years old. Yes, but 21, 22. Today, I'm 47 years old and still standing on the same pedestal of what is right for Nigeria. And also the reason, the reason to be bribed by people who have stolen Nigeria's money. If I wanted to make money with Sahari waters, I would have made so much money, I would have brought an iron very close to Australia and living there by myself. Because each time I wrote a story against the rich people, the first attitude is, what do you want? And when I tell them that you cannot afford what I want, they look at me and say, there's nobody we cannot bribe now. We have bribed this, but they will name all the journalists and how they bribed them. But I said, there has to be one person that you cannot bribe and that would be me. That's been where I stood. To answer your question, I did not belong to any secret societies. And I have lived my life very transparently, including in this presidential campaign. I'm raising money transparently. As of today on GoFundMe, I saw that we raised 89,000 dollars. Yes. Our goal is to raise 2 million dollars. Not Canadian dollars or not Australian dollars, US dollars. But I heard US dollars are stronger than Australian dollars. 2 million US dollars, with which we can defeat this old guard. And we are well on our way to raising that money and I'm sure we will reach that destination. Whichever will it is, we are getting this hope that we never lost to come our way. The other day, when, uh, Melbourne, a doctor who came and said, never also believed in me before now, he thought I was working for Amichi, until he watched a video on YouTube and saw that I fought Amichi before and recorded it. He gave me 1,000 dollars, right there, American dollars. We know that a lot of you who can afford to form this revolution. So you are not convinced yourself that you won't succeed. But for me, and I want to be very clear, it's not about money. We can have all the money we want and still not win the election. But we have all the will that we give to defeat this in this election, even when we don't have dollars anymore. So that's where I come in. So most people still in my life, I did not believe in secret societies. I don't believe we need to believe in secrets. The countries that are doing well are countries that are doing things transparently. And the governments that will bring Mexico away from me that are completely transparent, I intend to declare myself. I intend to be sure that anybody who's working in my government, they are certain that the players have put their head on the website or the internet government or a special website that accessible anywhere. I intend, when we recover money from chiefs, that we make them available to the public to know from whom we recovered the money and how we recovered. Those are things that we hardly believe we will do when you give the power, we never did any more of them. See, today, they claim they are recovering money, you don't know for whom they recovered, how long they recovered, they just tell us they are recovering money. We go back 200, 30 million naira, such a, this is our attitude. If they do want your rights, they went to China to borrow 200, 30 million naira. You know, these guys are not only wicked, they are also idiots, I'm sorry to say.
So let's take the next three questions. Number six and seven and eight, get ready.
Alright. So please let's see your part. I would say that being a fan since 2006, I've been following Sahari waters and I always like to watch Dr. Davi's program on YouTube. And my question is, there's so much confusion in the land right now, in Nigeria right now, because people don't, people are really confused. Some people just want to get somebody a candidate that will challenge, yeah, the present government, a president. And because of that, they are going for articulation, which I think so many of my friends, so many of my colleagues, which have come in, are getting articulated every day, which is a big concern. I just want to probably say this, that I just discovered that there are two categories of people. People that are running to churches, religious organizations for safety, just because it's an opus situation. And where you can find them is where you go to congregations, large congregations, you see them. You don't see them on the street, like they are really praying to God, they want up. Okay, and there are other people that are using music because that's what is selling now, even abroad. Nigerian music industry is selling everywhere, so people are also using that to console themselves. So I will just, it's just like the suggestion and like the question, just to tell you that, if you want to get people, a large number of people in a place, let's to look into going to, uh, conventions, church religious organization programs, like the Experience, the normal event, the first Friday of every December, where you can get organized by polar deficiency. You can get a large number of youth there. And also, uh, 6 million people gathered in redemption camp every December. You can also get the villagers, the marketers, everybody there. Then, uh, then my last, my last, sorry, sorry about that. My last question is, it's about, can I remember? Yes, my last question is, what are you, what is your plan towards getting the Bowdita of Nigerians? Because there's no Jeta in Nigeria, so what are your plans, what are you planning to do about that? Thank you very much.
Please, number eight, get ready.
Hi, my name is Amelia. So I've been to Nigeria once and I found something quite eye-opening. Firstly, when I was there, I saw that the electricity wasn't working. And when I was at my grandmother's place, there was one day where we had three days without electricity. Like, it may not seem like a big deal, but not having electricity is kind of bad. And I was wondering what you and your party would do to make sure that electricity was working more efficiently and better for the people. And I also noticed that after 8pm, it was safe to leave your compound where your house was. And it was due to thieves or even the police around. How are you and your party gonna combat police brutality and also protect the people of Nigeria?
This is a great honor for me, Mr. Shoray. I first saw you on YouTube and it was like I was dreaming. Is this for you? Is this really a candidate that really loves Nigeria to this extent? And you've shown your love by coming to Australia. We are very far away down under. And if you don't love us, if you don't love Nigeria, you would not have come here. So I just want to appreciate that. My name is Dr. Mrs. Motroya Adibai. I have a few questions here, I hope I don't run out of time. The first thing is the mind. Someone has rightly said here that the mind, even the devil uses our mind to conquer us. There is fear. So the mind and fear prevents us from doing what we should do. What is your strategy to win? When Israelites got to the border and they're supposed to enter the promised land, fear prevented them from entering the promised land. They were afraid of giants, giants that God could...